Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Good, 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 good.
Hi, honey. How are you?
Hey, it's three o'clock.
Good.
Want to start a meeting?
Let's do it. Sounds like a plan.
All right. Well, welcome to the June two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting of the Allen County Public Library Board of Library Trustees. May we have a roll call?
Certainly, Mr. Eisbart and Mr. Eisbart.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Seifert. Ms. Tucker.
Present.
Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Castleman.
Present.
And Ms. Shaminoff, present. So we have six out of seven currently.
Thank you. Six present, one absent or coming late a little bit. Uh, can I have an emotion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose by nay. It passes. If there is no objection, I'd like to combine the approval of the minutes of the regular session of the twenty-fifth of May, two thousand and twenty-three, the executive session of May twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three, and minutes of approval of claims, June nine, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, I do not object and will make motion to pass.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose by nay. We have our financial report.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, in your packet are your reports, and there's a couple of lines I wanted to report on this month. Uh, first one being legal services. As I note, we had to, we were paying the bill on the Barnes and Thornburg. That's the legal expense for the facility master plan. As noted, that will be reimbursed once the bonds are issued, assuming we go with bonds. Uh, so that was to be expected, and we'll continue to move money in there if we need to by the end of the year. Uh, the other is vehicle services. Just, I think that's a victim of the inflation that's going on, the cost of auto repairs and taking care of our fleet vehicles. Spending a little ahead of time or ahead of schedule. So should we need to move money, we'll move it in at the end of the year. Other than that, the other lines are spending within their parameters. As far as news and notes, as I note in there, we are very close to being able to file the annual financial report. The audit has been pretty much completed. In fact, we have an exit conference scheduled with the auditors on Tuesday. Ben's going to be, uh, attending for the board, and after that, it will be just getting it in, getting their letter, which is their auditor letter, uh, putting it in the print shop, getting the final copy, and then filing with GFOA by the thirtieth to get the award for excellence or to put it in for award for excellence. So that's coming to a close. And then the other one is obviously budgets are going on right now. We're starting to get information coming in, and there's various webinars that DLGF is putting on. Uh, the biggest news right now is they are going to limit, there is HB fourteen ninety-nine did come back around. I didn't think it was going to make it out of committee, but there's certain provisions that did, and right now it's been reported. Uh, we were in a seminar yesterday where growth quotient will be now limited to the, it looks like four percent. It's going to be eighty percent of the actual for the next two years, so two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. So four percent instead of five percent because it was projected to go five and then five point one. So that does have an impact. For us, it means about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that we'll have to make sure, uh, we adjust the budget downward because we won't be able to raise it the usual growth quotient. Again, that's just for twenty-four and twenty-five, and it was done as a, uh, reaction to the inflation and the growth in the excess values that happened and people's property tax bills going up. So, uh, there were no other items for the circuit breakers other than for certain, um, homestead credits and things like that, but they don't affect our budget. But other than that, uh, we'll be continuing to work on the budget as it comes in. A lot of the numbers come in on June thirtieth or afterward, and then throughout July, as you recall, we'll get those. Just, you know, reminder that, uh, we are looking at the October date for our budget passage this year, same as last year, same calendar as last year. And, um, you know, I don't see anything coming out of it that would be extraordinary this year, but, you know, I'm sure we'll be contacting you to set up the series for the finance and personnel committee. We usually start the budget discussions there in late July, August, things like that.
Thank you, David. Any questions on the financial report? Not a motion to accept the financial report? Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Any of those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose by nay. Thank you. And we now have the approval of the claims.
Yep, I'll bring those around. Uh, it's a light check run today, three hundred and forty-nine thousand. The highest is, as usual, system-wide electrical service at sixty-six thousand and self-insurance payments into the, or I should say, payments into the self-insurance fund of thirty-five thousand, the two highest.
Okay. Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, we have seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose by nay. Now our social work intern presentation.
Yes, thank you, Ben. So Connor Ross is here with us today from the Indiana University School of Social Work, and he recently completed a term with us as a social work intern here at the Maine Library. So he's going to give a presentation about his experiences here, working with our patrons. And to introduce him and to give some context as to the work he did, I will introduce Tracy Ward, our information services manager.
Um, on any given day at Maine, uh, patron, we will help patrons with things like housing assistance, applications for unemployment benefits, social security benefits, resume building, job applications, food insecurity, obtaining a cellphone, and retrieving, retrieving lost documents like social security cards, driver's licenses, birth certificates, state IDs, and the like, among many, many other things. When some of the social services agencies closed during COVID, we saw an uptick, a large uptick, in requests for help with these types of things. And while some of that has lessened, it is still a large part of our daily activities. Our employees have done an amazing job of pivoting with the needs of our patrons, and they have learned some skills that they never thought they would need, from being able to navigate sites like IDMe and login.gov to providing assistance for someone that needs just a warm place to sleep or a warm meal. There's no doubt that every employee at ACPL has a desire to help, and sometimes that can take a toll. The mental and emotional health of our employees is very important, and anything we can do to lessen the load and provide support, the better it would be for our employees and for our patrons. The benefits of having access to a social work intern and to the Parkview Homeless Team have been immeasurable, and we would love to see those partnerships grow. With that, I would love to introduce our social work intern, Connor Ross, to explain that a little bit more to you.
Could, before Connor comes to the, uh, lectern.
Sir.
Could you put us in the space as to how this occurs? People, our patrons or non-patrons walk into the library with a problem?
Yes.
And that's how it begins?
Yeah, so they will go to, a lot of times, because Reader Services is sort of right there at the forefront as soon as you enter the building. We're right in the middle of the building. Um, they find themselves there very easily. Uh, many times, security will lead someone there for assistance, mainly because we are the only department in the building that has access to computers for adults. And so we do a lot of help with online, anything on the computer, anything online, um, we are the go-to for a lot of these folks. And we see a lot of repeat folks. We see a lot of what we call regulars. We see them a lot. Some people, we help them once or twice. We may not see them again for a while, or we may never see them again because they've gotten the resources they need. But a lot of the agencies around town have come to find out that we are a very useful and accessible resource for these folks. So when they go somewhere and they need help, especially when a lot of these places were closed and they are available only by appointment or only by a phone call, it was much easier for people to come to the library to get that help than trying to make that appointment or call on the phone. They may not have a phone. They may not have a way to get to those, those other agencies. So that's where we step in.
Thank you.
I'm going to chime in with that as well. I refer to public libraries as almost second responders when it comes to emergencies. And also, particularly the downtown landscape, how many other places are open seven days a week, five night, four nights with the hours that we are? Not too many. So if you are in a crisis situation at six o'clock on a Thursday, we're about the only game in town where you can come in and get some immediate assistance.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Connor Ross. I'm a third-year student with Indiana University, the School of Social Work. I did my internship, my first internship with, um, ACPL at Maine here. Um, and as Tracy just explained, I'm going to, um, be talking with you a little bit about my experiences there. So, um, ACPL and other libraries across the nation encounter patrons who have increasing psychosocial needs. Serving patrons with high psychosocial needs, particularly homeless patrons and persons with serious mental illnesses can leave staff feeling inadequate and stressed, which can lead to a decline in job satisfaction and adverse impacts on their overall well-being. The placement of a social worker at ACPL Maine helps staff navigate these increasing needs by giving them the tools to do so and also offering support with evidence-based practices during and in the aftermath of an incident. Um, so just giving a little bit of an overview of the population that we see in Reader Services. Um, a significant number of our patrons, um, struggle with finances, homelessness, unmet mental health needs, and lack of social supports, as well as substance use disorders. A needs assessment performed by Beth Waller, who is an expert on library social work, um, estimated fifty-four percent of our patrons had unmet mental health needs, while twenty-six percent had unmet medical needs, and thirty-two percent struggled with housing insecurity. Many of our patrons also have little to no family supports. So kind of the, the presenting problem that I saw in, in readers, at least from a social work perspective, is that, um, as Tracy explained, um, patrons often present to the desk at readers, um, with one of the following concerns, and they require, um, some kind of assistance either with resources or, um, they might need assistance with using technology in order to obtain, um, one of the following. Um, and these are issues such as housing insecurity, um, which roughly a third of our patrons deal with. Sometimes it can just be an anger management or conflict resolution issue. Um, somebody might have had something happen outside, and then that carries over to inside, and they might just need somebody to talk to to kind of de-escalate them in that moment. A lot of patrons also come in just for the, just to have the social connection and to be able to talk with staff and other patrons here. Um, so this is a particular patron that I worked with, um, and it kind of gives you some insight into, um, his lack of, or his current social supports and kind of the lack of social supports for the patron. And from a social work perspective, um, yeah, that, that's what it kind of explains is, is what he has in his life, um, to be able to support him. And, um, first off, you can see that the rescue mission is one of these things. ACPL is another one of his main supports. Um, he actually got the part-time job that he now has from the job fair at ACPL. Um, and then he also worked one-on-one with me. Um, and he also has a friend that he sometimes comes here with. Um, so, I mean, this really just shows, um, you know, just how critical, um, the library is for this patron and for so many patrons that we have. These are some of the engagement skills that I used, which is more of, um, just from a social work end of things. Um, empathy for struggling patrons, um, de-escalation during times of crisis or tense moments with patrons, um, and also patience in working with patrons who might need time to make significant progress. Some of the challenges in working with patrons, um, as Tracy noted earlier, there are a significant number of patrons that lack any kind of computer training and are not equipped to fill out the applications that they were instructed to fill out by either housing agencies or jobs and so on. So they often turn to us to, um, you know, they just say, hey, I don't know how to do this, and they might need help creating a Google account or something like that. Um, and it can, there were times where it took me, you know, up to an hour to kind of finish working with a patron to get them to the point where they needed to be. A lot of our patrons, um, are ambivalent about mental health treatment and are unlikely to seek any. As I noted previously, they have lack of family and friend support, um, lack access to running water, have no shelter, and no transportation on top of the other existing challenges. So while I'm an expert on mental health and social work, I'm certainly not an expert on the daily living experience of our patrons, and I sought their insight throughout my placement here on, um, just kind of what their individual experience was like, whether that be, um, living at the mission, um, being incarcerated in the past, or struggling with housing insecurity. I worked closely with the patron who I created the ECO map I showed you earlier for, um, and assisted with other patrons, um, on housing applications, job applications, um, and also working directly with higher-needs patrons. Also advocated for changes that will continue to have positive impacts on patrons, um, in the future here. This is just a little bit of information on some of the work that I did while I was here. Um, I created a mental health awareness month book list that is about thirty-six books long. I actually worked on scheduled a training, I believe, um, that will be later this summer, um, be delivered by social worker Jay Bastian and Allison Ballard, um, on individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Conducted trauma-informed libraries research, um, participated in the discourse on the code of conduct revisions, and also researched potential social work funding opportunities for the future. I used motivational interviewing, um, strengths-based approach and CBT, which are just different, um, practice techniques in social work with patrons while I worked here. And kind of in summary, um, to wrap up here, what I learned about myself, the library, and our patrons. I really loved, while I was here, getting the opportunity to build relationships and work one-on-one with patrons who, um, frequent Reader Services. Assisting patrons with finding housing and applying to jobs can be a pretty arduous process, but it is an incredibly rewarding experience. I also feel like I thrive in assisting with de-escalation. Anytime a patron might be upset about something, um, due to my experience working on an inpatient psychiatric unit and, um, as well as the emergency room. So what I learned about our patrons, um, many of our patrons are dealing with unmet mental health needs. They lack a support system and are also dealing with homelessness. ACPL is one of the few external protective factors for our struggling patrons and offers a safe, stable environment for those who are often subject to unstable environments. ACPL gives each one of our patrons an opportunity to have meaningful interactions with others and develop human relationships when they otherwise might not have such an opportunity. Our patrons have hope for a better future because of the services offered by ACPL, by ACPL and their willingness to work with our patrons. And that goes from things like handing out hope to the job fair, um, as well as the Parkview Homeless Team. And lastly, um, what I learned about ACPL is, um, the library is so much more to a lot of people than, than just a place to borrow books. Staff is made up of some of the most kind, caring, and selfless people who I've had the opportunity to work with in my life. ACPL is often the last safety net for many of our patrons, and they rely on their services, um, in times of need, such as free internet access and sometimes respite during major weather events. ACPL's presence benefits our entire community, and the resources available here help break barriers for patrons every single day, which is precisely the mission of social work. ACPL's continued collaboration with social work will benefit the staff, our patrons, as well as the community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anybody has any questions at all at this time, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? How long were you here?
Um, so I started at the beginning of January and finished in the, the middle of May this year.
You talked about the gentleman that you interacted with, but are there other experiences that kind of stick out to you? Or if you would think of the, you know, if there was one that stuck out to you, you know, what would that be?
I think really, really just taking the time to, to work with people and meet them where they're at, whoever that might be. There were times, I mean, there are plenty of times when, when people come into the library and they might not be looking for resources. They might not be looking to apply for a job. Um, they may just want to check out a book or, you know, have somewhere to be for a little while. But, um, I think, um, kind of developing a rapport with patients or with patrons, sorry. I used to, working in the hospital with patrons, um, kind of helped me, um, you know, be able to, in the future, when those patrons were ready to do something like apply for a job or apply for housing, just having that relationship with them and having that foundation, um, went a long way on, um, you know, them eventually maybe getting a job or something like that. I can, I can think of a lot of different examples of patrons that I, that I got to work with like that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, Gloria.
Gloria's got one.
Yeah, sure.
So where are you going to go from now?
Um, so I will be graduating in May of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I still have one more practicum left to complete, and I'm hopeful that that will be here at ACPL, if you'll have me back, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor did guess claps. That's very good. Connor did mention that he offered some input into our patron behavior expectations. So that is a document that, along with staff input, we are revising. I believe now it's with Pete and Ted in legal review, and we will be bringing it to you at a future meeting for your review and hopeful approval.
Great.
Leading to policy change. Wow. It's good.
Want to talk about Community Foundation?
Yes, I sure do. This is excellent news. So you have a memo in your board packet, but as an overview, the Community Foundation of Greater Fort Wayne informed me recently that they held an endowment for an organization that had closed, and they needed a new home for the endowment. The organization that had held the fund was located in Monroeville, and it served youth. So the Community Foundation was seeking a similar new home for the fund. So they thought of our Monroeville branch. So the foundation board approved transferring the endowment to a new fund that would be named the Allen County Public Library, Monroeville Branch. And this endowment would be held at the Community Foundation on behalf of us, and the library would be allowed to take annual distributions in the fifty-four-hundred-dollar range. The funds must be used at Monroeville Branch, and they must be used for youth supplies, resources, and programs. And this could include programs, supplies, books and other materials, and furnishings for use by children and/or teens. Currently, there's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in the fund, and the fund has been receiving a seven to nine percent return. Outside donors can contribute to the fund, and for any external donations, the Community Foundation will match them twenty percent, up to ten thousand dollars.
Questions on it? Uh, let's put a motion on the table, and then we can have questions. Who would like to move the acceptance?
Two more.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, folks. Questions? Looks like Kent didn't spend all the money when he's out in Monroeville.
This was held separately at the Community Foundation there. Otherwise, it would probably be gone.
Well, if there are no questions, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of the acceptance, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose by nay, and good for us.
Good for us.
All right. Item eight, executive director's report.
Great. You have a written report, but I'll give some highlights. Whenever I write the report, always there's late-breaking news. So when I wrote the report, I was very pleased with our strong summer reading turnout, and we had read collectively more than one point five million minutes. Well, it's now two point five million minutes. In just a few days, we gained another million, so we're on a good track. Last week, on June thirteenth, uh, ACPL hosted in collaboration with Health Visions Midwest, History Heals, a community conversation to bridge the gap between historical racism and issues that Fort Wayne residents experience today. Local leaders gave overviews on topical issues, and then an open forum was held afterwards to allow for continued conversation and dialogue. I was there along with about sixty to seventy people, if not more. It was higher than that, and it was excellent. And thank you, Beth, for facilitating that, coming to ACPL. Those are exactly the kind of programs we hope to have here. Just yesterday, we had a group of twenty Lincoln financial executives for a tour of the Roland Center on June twenty-first. So the group was visiting Fort Wayne from several other Lincoln offices around the country. Some were here locally from Fort Wayne, but we had Philly office folks, Greensboro office folks, and Hartford office folks. Some of them had never been to Fort Wayne before. So they came and toured the Roland Center and seemed to have a really good time. And Commissioner Beck helped facilitate that for us to make sure that we were among their stops while they were in Fort Wayne, so we're grateful for that. As you can probably tell, it is a season for festivals here in Fort Wayne, and that keeps our staff busy nearly every weekend with staffing outreach tables at community events. We were at Arab Fest, we were at German Fest, we were at Juneteenth last weekend, and we have many more events to go on this summer. Speaking of Commissioner Beck, in his role as the foundation chair for the ACPL Foundation, they voted this month to increase their meetings to every other month versus quarterly. So instead of four meetings a year, they will now have six meetings a year. In other news from the foundation, I'm very excited to share that the foundation this month approved a partnership with Questa Education Foundation to offer forgivable loans for ACPL staff pursuing a master's degree in library science. The foundation pledged a hundred and ten dollars in support, a hundred and ten dollars, goodness, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in support over the next five years, and Questa will work to raise matching funds through other sources. We are still determining the details, but the hope is to have application information to share with staff this fall. And the goals of the new partnership include increasing diversity amongst staff, plus aiding in employee retention, and we are working closely with Questa's executive director, Liz Bushnell, on this program. Liz also happens to be a member of our Friends of the Library Board. Several staff, including myself, will be leaving tomorrow for the American Library Association Annual Conference in Chicago. In addition to staff attending the multi-day conference, we also have fourteen employees that are heading to the conference on Saturday on a day trip, um, to the exhibition hall. There's lots to be done in the exhibits, and we want to thank the Friends of the Library because they generously covered the cost of the charter bus so our staff can attend the exhibits. And some very bittersweet news. Youth Services Manager Mara Honeywell, after eighteen years here at the library, she is, she has accepted the director position at the West Lafayette Public Library. That is her childhood library. She grew up going there. Her parents still live in that community, and she had told me she would not have applied for any other director position in the country but that one. And she applied, and she got it, and we're very, very proud of her, and we're also very, very sad for us because, as you can imagine, that is a lot of organizational history and dedication and passion. Leaving us, she'll be greatly missed. Um, she's been very generous with her time and her schedule, and she will stay with us through July twenty-eighth, which puts her here through the end of summer, which is very, very helpful. And we are already recruiting for that position, but those are going to be very, very big shoes to fill. You may remember that we have been working with them on a next iteration of our strategic plan and they have been conducting surveys, partner interviews and focus groups with a focus on service to our immigrant and refugee communities. So they are very excited to come here in July and share with us what they have learned.
Thank you. Where can you get an MLS?
Well, you can get it a lot of places, but a lot of our staff use University, Indiana University and it can be done completely online.
Oh, really? Gloria, something we might want to do now that we're retired.
I'm just stunned that you would even ask that. One retiree to the other.
Well, we do have a Youth Services Manager position open and I think you would be excellent.
Forget about the MLS.
We can make that happen right now, Gloria.
Listen, if you want someone to read stories to children, I can do that, but that's it.
We'll take you up on that.
Okay.
Any questions? Is there any, are there any items of new business? How about public comments? Public? How about over the airwaves? No public comments? Anything for the good and welfare of the body? Then I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay? We do have an executive session scheduled following this, so hang around. We are adjourned.